To order this supportive education regular meeting Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh three. And I have a roll call.
This is Theodore, here. This is Nick Phillips, here. This is Erval Gornfield, here. This is Deb. This is Lala. Mr. Verardi.
Here.
Mr. Tabuzio.
Here. We have a quorum. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Mister State, the mission of North School District eighty is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment. Celebrate the success. Would like.
Thank you for celebrating the success tonight. Dr. Raviola will be speaking a little bit about his experiences. As you may recall back in July, we learned that Dr. Raviola was named Curriculum Associates twenty twenty-five Extraordinary Educator Leadership Collaborative Member. There's a lot to say.
There's a lot.
And he attended a, actually presented at a workshop last week. So he's going to speak a little bit about that and about our student growth.
So I just want to talk a little bit about stretch growth. And in his first slide here, that's our reading scores from the end of last school year. And all the way in the bottom right, there's a little piece that's highlighted in red. That shows stretch growth. And that shows that forty percent of our students met their stretch growth target last year. So students are assigned two different tracks, one being a typical growth. And that's based on like a median score where we want students to be. And there's a stretch growth. If we go to the next slide, that's where we have math, where it shows thirty-seven percent of our students met their stretch growth for math. So you might be wondering, well, what does this mean? Why is this important? Well, the national average that most schools tend to see is about twenty percent of their students meeting their stretch growth. Where we have forty percent meeting in reading and thirty-seven percent meeting that stretch growth goal in math. So a little bit more about those two paths. Typical growth is really that median observed. And it's a benchmark comparing students, you know, on the national average. Stretch growth is really meant to put students on a path to proficiency. So we want to make sure that we're getting students up to where they need to be to be proficient in the grade level standards. So it really takes a little bit more than just meeting a typical growth metric. On the next slide, on the left, you'll see if a student makes their typical growth in one year. I mean, that's great. If they make it another year, that's great too. But if they make their stretch growth on the right side, it gets them closer to being proficient at that grade level. And there's studies that show it's anywhere from seventy-five to eighty-five percent of students, if they meet their stretch growth two years in a row, that they're able to become proficient in those grade level standards. So it really is making sure that we're pushing all students for acceleration and making sure that they are able to meet those grade level benchmarks. And by meeting their stretch growth two years in a row, we're able to get them there. So I really didn't have all of this information compared to like national norms prior to last week. But I was asked to present at a conference last week. I was part of two different sessions. One of them was on how to achieve stretch growth. And we got to share some of our strategies for what we've been working on and what all of our grade level teams have been working on, what things like win time look like, how we provide our interventions. And really, it was pretty cool to see, to be up on stage and to have other districts wanting to learn from what we're doing, because we have a lot of things that we're doing well. And so that was nice to be recognized for that. And the second session was how do, you know, foster a data-driven culture? What are some of the protocols, different types of meeting structures that we have that focus on data? And how do our teachers use data to guide instruction? Which is still something that we're continuously working to improve. But it was really a great experience to be able to share that with other schools and districts. And, you know, it's kind of cool when you're in a crowd and you're up there presenting and you're seeing people with their cell phones, taking snapshots of your presentation and a few emails that I've gotten. So nice to see, you know, you're doing some of the recognition for the good things that are happening. So lastly, the day after that conference, we had two representatives from Curriculum Associates that came out and met with our third, fourth, and fifth grade ELA teachers about magnetic reading, which is our reading program. They provided lunch for the teachers and just wanted to hear what are some of the things that are going well? What are some of the challenges? How can they support teachers who are teaching this curriculum? And it was nice to just have some time to talk that through and get some advice from, you know, these people who are experts in that particular field for this curriculum that we use. And then we also had a chance to visit a fourth grade classroom to see when time in action, since that was part of the presentation from the day before. So just wanted to highlight this as, you know, a success that we have seen and realizing that there are people who are coming to us. They kind of say, hey, what are some of the things that you're doing? Because we're seeing that you guys are growing at twice the rate of other schools and other districts. And it was something that I hadn't really realized until it came up. So I thought that was something, you know, positive to share out this evening. Thank you.
Any other celebrate the success?
No.
Oh, I have one. The Giles girls basketball, JV one, and the varsity played a very great game and lost by a variable. They did fantastic. So great teams this year, great coaching.
Action item. Consider motion to approve the agenda as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Renzo.
Second.
Amanda, roll call please.
Mr. Verardi.
Yes.
Uh, this is Theodore, I'm sorry, Mrs. Big Phillips. Yes. This is Theodore. Yes. This is Erval Gornfield, tech. Mr. Tabuzio.
Yes. Motion passes. Recognition of visitors. We have one visitor. Thank you. Correspondence, any correspondence to note?
No, nothing.
Public participation. Any, does anybody want to, do you have public participation?
I just grabbed a paper. Thank you. The one that says participation, there should be two there.
Just a visitor's list?
There's a visitor's list and then there's a participation one.
There is nothing on the poll. Thank you.
Thank you. No public participation signed in. FOIA request, there is one FOIA request. It can be reviewed as published in the website. Presentation, North School District eighty school programming and schedules for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So at Giles School, we're going to start with Giles School first. Mrs. Gulo and I tasked our building leadership team, as you can see on the SMARTboard, these are the members of our building leadership team, with reimagining next year's schedule at Giles School. And so as a team, we were able to come up with eight significant areas that we wanted to focus on. And we're going to talk about these eight areas going forward. So with the first one, increased instructional minutes. So next year, what we will be doing is increasing the instructional periods to fifty-eight minutes for a full period. And a half period will now be twenty-nine minutes. So with that increased instructional time, this will allow our reading and our math teachers to provide tier-two support within their classroom. So what does that mean for our win period? That means next year, win will be going away. I'll talk more about that in a little bit. But what this will allow our math and our reading teachers to do is focus on students that are at the fortieth percentile to the sixteenth percentile. And so we're able to now make sure that we're supporting more kids for tier-two and provide that additional math and reading support within the classroom. For our tier-two instruction, as I said, win will be gone next year. And so that means that our tier-two strategic support will take place in our math and our reading classrooms. Now, what does that mean? That means students now that qualify for multiple interventions, such as math and reading, will no longer be pulled from Spanish, because they'll get that support within that classroom setting. However, if we have a student that is tier-three, then that student will receive support from, our goal is to be able to hire an interventionist next year that will be working with students that are at tier-three, which is at the tenth percentile and below. But that interventionist will also be able to support the classroom teachers, the reading and the math teachers, by providing additional resources and support, collaborating with them, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students at the tier-two level within the reading and the math classroom setting. Our tier-three students will be pulled, will be pulled from Spanish. So if you're tier-three, there's potential that you'll be pulled from Spanish. And just looking at numbers, this year currently, we only have two students in the entire Giles School that are tier-three support. So the other students that we are working with are at a tier-two. So what does this mean for our teachers? Our math teachers, our science teachers, our social studies teachers, and our reading teachers? So what this means is we will no longer have just a fifth grade ELA teacher. We'll have no longer a sixth grade science teacher. But what we will have is two teachers at each grade level. So for example, and if you're looking at the first that's on the SMARTboard, I'm going to talk about math and ELA first, because those subjects are co-taught. So for example, a teacher will be teaching two sections of co-talk fifth grade, while teaching one section of general education, fifth grade. And that same teacher will then teach two sections of sixth grade. Now, the other teacher will be doing the same exact thing, except for they'll have two sections of co-talk sixth grade, for example, ELA, one section of general education at the sixth grade level, and then two sections at the general education for fifth grade. So in a teacher's schedule, a teacher teaches five periods. Five periods, and that's what they will be doing to support our students. So now, at the science and social studies, because those subjects are not co-taught, so what that means is that a teacher will have three sections of fifth grade and two sections of sixth, while the other teacher will have the opposite, three sections of sixth and two sections of fifth. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail as we go on. But one of the other things that is really nice about the schedule for next year, it's increased SEL time. And so currently this year, we have four days of advisory for nineteen minutes. And we have, on Wednesdays, we have advisory for fifteen minutes. Moving forward, next year, advisory will be thirty minutes, five days a week. And so what we're going to be doing is supporting our students three days with social, emotional support. And that is through our second step curriculum, that is through our common sense curriculum, that's also reviewing our hotspots in our building, our building expectations, working with our students. But that'll be now ninety minutes a week. New next year will be one day of library and enrichment time, working on areas such as vocabulary, being able to go into the library, check out a book, find a different book, and, you know, get a book. Our goal is to get a book in the students' hands. And then one day of team-building activities, having students understand that there's conflict. You'll have conflict throughout a student's lifetime, but being able to give them the strategies and the skills by having them work together and work through conflicts. So that will be done during advisory, so we're excited about that. Also through our, the grant that we just completed at the end of last school year, we put into place a dedicated check-in and checkout time. So this is not only for academics, but this is also for behavior as well. What this allows is dedicated time that does not interfere with instructional time, to start our day, to kind of set a student up for success. If it's academic, making sure that they're prepared for class, making sure executive functioning skills, they know what they need to do. If it's behavior, working on specific behavior skills that are specific to their needs, setting them up for success, building that relationship with the staff member. And then at the end of the day, we have what's called a checkout, to kind of reflect on how our day went. If we made great choices, celebrate that success. If we did not make good choices, then have a discussion on that and what can we do to be better? And what can we do the next day? Taking ownership for our learning. The nice thing through this, this is through our PBIS rewards app. So as long as a parent has downloaded it and gone into the app, they'll have access to see all the notes that the teachers leave, the points that the student has earned or has not earned throughout the entire day. So it's a good piece. So when a student goes home, we always, when we have conversations with their parents, we're always like, at the dinner table, have a conversation with your child, see how the day went. Most children will say, school was fine, I didn't do anything, right? But this will allow that parent with a student that's in check-in, checkout, to be able to have this information and help lead the conversation with their child, to help their child in the area of academics or if it's behavioral. The nice thing with the new schedule for next year, students will be in their advisory to start the day, the middle of the day, and at the end of the day. Which means that they'll be able to, many times I'll hear from students, well, I don't want to leave my jacket in the room, or I just want to carry everything. Every student has a spot to put their belongings in their advisory currently, okay? But now what this is going to support is students, because they're going to be in that room at least three times a day, the morning, the afternoon, and at the end of the day. So if they have a project in the afternoon, they don't have to carry their markers all day. They can go in at midday, grab their markers, whatever they need for the afternoon, and have them ready. I also would like to mention, as I've said in the past, all the teachers have supplies too. So if a student is missing a supply, doesn't have scissors, doesn't have glue, doesn't have markers, whatever the case may be, the teacher has them and they can use them as well. So we're excited about that. With the new schedule with our teachers, so our teachers teaching multiple grade levels, what we're doing is we want to be able to support our staff with the collaboration process. So teachers will have an additional twenty-five minutes, fifty minutes a week. So it ends up to be fifty minutes a week. So they'll have two twenty-five minutes of dedicated collaboration time where they're working on the scope and sequence. They're working on common formative assessments. They're working on common summative assessments. They're developing the proficiency scale and they have constant and improved communication. So the data now will lead the instruction, so they'll be able to work with each teacher. There may be a teacher, for example, if Mrs. Gulo and I are teaching reading. Mrs. Gulo may have a common formative assessment where her students really hit it out of the park. My common formative assessment, I'll see that there's some needs that I need to address. Through our conversation, what did you do that was different? We'll be able to have that conversation so that we can support all the students in all the grade levels. So in our building next year, half of our school already has, for example, Spanish PE. They're already teaching two grade levels, five, six, or seven, eight. Now our ELA, our math, our science, and our social studies teachers will fall in line and also have two subject, two grade levels of that same subject. The other thing that we're excited about is the built-in library time monthly. Students will have access to the library. They already have access during reading and during social studies time already. But now they'll have that dedicated time where they can go in there, check out a library book. We're going to work with the students next year so that they can check out their own library books. We'll teach everyone how to do that process. But it would be really great to get a library book in the students' hands. Also, if there's a book that a student needs that may not be in our library, we have a partnership with Eisenhower Library where we can communicate with Eisenhower Library. We can get the book from Eisenhower Library and we can get it into our students' hands. So that is a really excited goal that we have next year for our students. So really excited. I think that our building leadership team did an amazing job coming together, identifying areas where we can focus on and putting a plan together. So this is supported by our building leadership team as well as Mrs. Gulo and myself. So thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to leave some programming updates. Remember, we're thinking about things here, we always want to look back at our enrollment. And here's our current enrollment. And if you look at that chart there, you can see we're a little heavier in third and fourth grade with our numbers into the, you know, one-twenty, approaching one-thirty and, I mean, thirty students in the fourth grade. But as we look at second grade with a hundred and two students, first grade a hundred and six, kindergarten currently seventy students. So these are just different things that we need to, you know, keep in mind as we're planning for next school year. So one of the things we want to look at is our first grade for next school year. Right now, we have seventy kindergartners. Current first grade is a hundred and six students. Now, generally in first grade, we do see about eighteen students, eighteen to twenty students on average, who will join us for, you know, a variety of reasons. So we would estimate that next school year in first grade, we have about eighty-eight students. So our proposal would be to reduce to four classes from five. And that would be about twenty-two students per class. Right now, we're at about twenty-one students per class in first grade this school year. Looking at third grade, so our current third grade enrollment, we have about a hundred and twenty-four students, about twenty-five students per class. We're projecting a hundred and two students based on our current second grade class size, which is, something we'd like to consider is dividing those students into four classes, which would still keep that number around twenty-five students per class. However, a thought is to, our plan is to maintain that fifth teaching position to support more personalized learning and provide more targeted support during the school day amongst that third grade team. So what would that look like? That would be, that teacher would be providing some small group instruction, providing additional emphasis on differentiated instruction, making sure that we're able to meet all students where they're at, and really being able to provide that targeted support. We see great gains with our students. For example, at the meeting of stretch growth that we were just talking about a few minutes ago, I provided that targeted support, some more targeted support that I think that we can provide to our students. It's going to benefit them even more. Third grade is a crucial year. Curriculum changes, the demands change going through second grade. So I'd really like to provide some more targeted support for that grade level and having that fifth teacher maintain that fifth position to provide some of that targeted support. I think will really help support all those students in that third grade. Now, that would be something different and it would be something we have to plan for and really be intentional and deliberate. But I think we're up for that task and I'm really excited about what that will look like. Sorry. Now, lastly, I would like to propose a second academic interventionist yearly. We have a large number of students who need that academic intervention support. And I'd also like to see us expand the percentiles at which we're able to provide that support. So right now, for tier-three, that support from an academic intervention is really is below the tenth percentile. And if we were able to get that up to the fifteenth, or maybe even a little bit higher, I think we'd be able to see those gains continue to grow and our students continue to grow. I also really would like this person to have a stronger emphasis on math. Historically, our ELA interventions have been stronger, but we've seen a higher need for those strong interventions in math to see our students continue to grow. So in this position, we, that academic interventions would still work with students in ELA and math, but they would have a stronger emphasis on planning the interventions for math and being able to expand the level of support that we're able to provide. And I think that was my last slide. If you have any questions for me then.
I have a quick question. I know you're paring out the details about that fifth, maintaining a little more targeted support. Do you envision it being classroom throughout the day where kids will be pulled and going into this classroom? Or will they be bouncing around with this support, be bouncing around in the class? How would you envision, I know it looks like you said you're hiring out the details.
So I think the key is being flexible and being able to make sure that we're putting a plan in place that's going to support what the students need. So it could be that that teacher's going to pull a group out into another classroom for a short period of time, or they're pushing into the classroom and supporting in a variety of ways. Could also be, hey, I'm going to pull a small group to a table in the classroom, or going in and supporting the teacher with running some additional small groups, some different guided reading groups. There's, the beauty of this, there's so much that we can do if we have that, that structure in place. So that would be where I want to go with this next, is kind of like put some plans in place. See what do we think would be most impactful? And then at the same time, kind of a little trial and error, to see what is working, what is not, and how do we make sure that we're supporting the most students that we can to see them continue to grow.
And this would only be specific to third grade, right?
Yes, right now, just third grade. Maybe that's something where if this, you know, works out and we see it go work out well, that's something that we can explore. But I think it gives us an opportunity to pilot something and, you know, see what we can do and, you know, see what that targeted support does. And hopefully, you know, it leads to some great gains and then we can learn from that and make it even better moving forward.
Do I need an emphasis on that? Does play into what you described as needing a little boost there? It's good.
One question. I know when we reported out on the report cards a few months back, we talked about one grade level that really, I forget if it was kindergarten or if it was first grade. Was it kindergarten readiness or first grade readiness?
It was on the report card when we recorded that, that was the kids who were ready for kindergarten. So coming into kindergarten, because they had to complete that assessment and not go to kindergarten. So it's not a reflection on our kindergarten program?
No.
It was a reflection on where kids are ready to come into kindergarten?
I'm just wondering, we always talk about, you know, how many, our classroom sizes. And is there an opportunity for the first grade to keep it at maybe five classrooms and smaller class sizes to see if there's an overall impact to testing, any type of other information that data would get worn from there?
Is it always best to have lower class sizes? Yes, I think we can always make an argument for that, because you can get more personalized learning in that case. This was based on, and somewhat of a financial decision too.
Yeah.
Because if we want to look at another interventionist, something has to give somewhere. Now, we've looked, we went back and looked at five years of kindergarten and first grade to see, as Dr. Raviola stated, eighteen new students has been our average. If we stay with that average, then I think this could be a good move for us. Now, we also have to look and see if we ended up with thirty new kids, that might be different. You know, we might have to come back and say, you know what, we actually do need another first grade teacher. In that case, we'd have to figure out that budgeting piece. But I, you know, I agree with you. We have had in the past, with Dr. Raviola looking at your numbers right now, and I know this is not a big difference, but one of six is what first grade is right now compared to where it's been. We've actually seen a decline going on of our numbers, you know, comparing one-twenty-nine. Where's eighth grade right now?
A hundred and forty, I think around a hundred and forty students.
Yeah, that's huge, huge classes. So it's something we can keep an eye on, but we have had two years of Um, so it's something we can keep an eye on, but we have had two years of kind of decent first grade now. I think that the game changer in this plan for Lee is really is third grade plan. Because this can be so dynamic and it can really allow us, especially in that third grade level, when it's like you, you know, you're reading or you're not reading. When you get to third grade, this becomes really a critical year. Because, you know, as you've probably always heard, before third grade, you're learning to read. After third grade, you're, you know, reading and learn. It's such a critical year, so if we can get this plan together and maybe pilot something like this, and even if you kept those base classrooms a little larger, but we're able to be much more dynamic with that fifth teacher. And third grade, one of the other reasons why it was chosen is they're a very strong knit team. They work well together. They complement each other. They, um, they work during lunch. They work at all the few times of the day. So we feel this would be the best, uh, to pilot this program. It'd be a nice place to start that. I know that's not what you asked me, but kind of all of that goes into the same thinking when we're looking at it, looking at the plans. And if we could get the third grade, uh, if that piloting that together, where we can really have those kids moving around for what they need, then we can also put in, you know, something we've talked about for the last few years is, you know, what's above mastery? You know, if we're going to have an enrichment, we have to have a program put together. We have to do something to offer kids. So could we now be looking at la- another layer of that as well? So if you already know and you can master that standard, we can move on to something else with that group of students. We have, you know, some stuff we do at Giles, which is good stuff with movement to, to Ridgewood. Um, but could we be more dynamic in all of our grades where we can be looking at teaching higher level standards to kids that are ready for higher level standards? And I think this being in third grade is a great place to pilot that. And, and Dr. Raviola will do a nice job doing that. It's a, it's a financial, um, it is, it's a financial decision also because we could go down to, um, four classrooms in third grade for next year. That's not something I would recommend, um, but it is something we can do. Um, and I think instead, if we look at meeting the kids' needs a little bit better than we have, not that we're not, but just a little bit better of a level. And of course, an interventionist is always a good idea. With someone to be able to target exactly where the kids' needs are is always nice. And we haven't been in our plan to move to an interventionist at Giles this year coming up when we looked at our five-year plan for Giles. I, I think what, um, Mr. Bietke has put together and, and the team for Giles is a great plan because it allows for that collaboration between teachers. When you don't have, when you have a teacher that we call siloed, where the teacher only teaches that one subject, that one thing, they do it five times a day and they do it well, but they don't have an opportunity to have those really rich conversations with someone else about how to teach something. Um, so we feel this will really provide that opportunity. Um, I, Dr. Mr. Bietke has done a great job working with the staff on this and as I'm sure you would, could understand that, you know, was, the staff was apprehensive of it. Nobody likes change and change is hard. Um, but he's done a great job and working with them and getting them ready for this change and I think they're actually looking forward to some of the change. I'm putting together that schedule and working with his, his D.L.T. None of those changed anything until the C.B.A. And as you know, we're negotiating contract this year. Um, if something comes up in that, which I'd be very surprised since they both work with their building leadership teams, then, you know, we'll have to adjust as needed, but we're not expecting anything as far as the day, the length of the day and, and such.
Do we have a sense of, excuse me, what kindergarten enrollment will be? I mean, I know it's not registration yet, so we don't have to think that, but do we anticipate it continuing to go down?
It has been going down the last few years. My anticipation at this point is the next two years will be on the lower side and then I'm sure we'll see an increase in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when full-time kindergarten is, is again, uh, free to families. And it's not that our cost for kindergarten is high, because as we looked last month, a bit of comparison, it's actually quite low, it's the lowest around. However, some other programs offer more of a, uh, hook ends. You know, you can drop someone off at six-thirty and hit someone off at six o'clock without an additional fee. So that becomes, uh, just another layer of non-fee. While they have a great program here within Lee School with the Park District, they're now with us before care, they're with us after care within our building, you know, within our actual, in this room. Um, it's still a cost, you know, so it's an additional on top of tuition. So I think once we see twenty-seven, twenty-eight, with that, we'll see a higher increase. Uh, we cut back from five kindergarten teachers to four kindergarten teachers two years ago. And I think that was the right, that's where we are still right now.
Anything else? Thank you very much. And thanks for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
Administrative reports, Superintendent, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, my is, my report is at my discussion items. Thank you.
Okay. Special education, Mr. Masters.
So two quick, excuse me, a couple of notes. Um, the first is that on, uh, this upcoming Monday, we will actually kick off our eighth grade, uh, special education transition meetings. That's a partnership with Ridgewood, uh, High School, where we start talking about, uh, some of our eighth grade, uh, eighth graders aspirations for the future, what the plans will be to guide them through high school and then beyond. So wonderful experience. We're very excited to be having those in the coming days and months, weeks. Um, and then the other one is that a celebration that our M.L. team recently completed the access testing. That is something that is, uh, required to kind of assess all of the proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in English for all of our, all of our multilingual learners. Um, so we're very excited that that is, uh, was done with great degree success and we're very excited to see how our students have progressed over the past several months. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Children's reports, Giles School, Mr. Bietke.
So it's that time of the year, five essentials. It opened up today. I'll be sharing the letter to the community this week. But the window is today, February eighteenth to March twenty-eighth. It's very important, as I will express here and then in my communication to the parents, that we needed at least twenty percent of our student parent, excuse me, of our school parent population to complete the survey. So as I say, and I'll say it over and over, please do not delay. Um, please, when I, the link is shared, please go on, complete the, uh, very important five essentials survey. That information is so helpful to us as we work on our school improvement plan, uh, to design the future here at Giles School as well as Lee School. The second thing I'd like to talk about is a night at the museum for our fifth through eighth grade families, which will take place on February twenty-sixth at five, from five-thirty to seven at Giles School. The doors at number, at entrance two, the main entrance, will open at five-fifteen. And the students, I know, are really excited to share all the work that they've been working on throughout the, uh, the beginning of the school year in all of their subjects, uh, at Giles School. So that is February twenty-sixth, so put it on your calendar. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee School, Dr. Raviola.
Thank you. So speaking of the five essentials, fifty-four minutes ago, I put a post on Class Dojo saying that we had thirteen parent take the survey today, which is two percent, but we need to get it to twenty. Happy report. We're already at eight percent. So, you know, it's like, what the bad, it's fifty-four minutes. But, um, that definitely is something that we will continue to push to, uh, you know, get those scores in so we can see the perception data of our, of our families and use that to, uh, drive our planning. Um, also, uh, just want to highlight today, we had a preschool for all event with our families coming in. There was some ice cream social, Eisenhower Library did a storytime. Uh, it was a very, uh, very cute and, uh, family-centered event. So I want to thank our, you know, preschool team for putting that together and for Mr. Cruz for helping, uh, you know, put that together along with them. Also, we got a third and fourth grade family date night on Thursday. Uh, so lots of funny things happening, uh, here at Lee and, uh, hopefully, I'll see something out for that. So that concludes my report.
Great. Discipline reports, Giles, Mrs. Gulo.
We had three in-school suspensions in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety-nine and twenty-one. And we had one in-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety-seven, nine, and twenty-one. That concludes my report.
Lee, Mrs. Aaron's.
I'll share out that we have nothing to report for, uh, the year at Lee.
Thank you. Board committees. Education, currently nothing to report. Board policy development.
That's in my report and then we have a consent item tonight.
Okay. Building grounds, uh, nothing exactly new, but, um, spring and summer plans are underway. Developing. Behavioral intervention, nothing to report currently. Negotiations in human resources, we're discussing closed. Finance, nothing currently. Communications, uh, the newsletter went out the other week. Good. Um, is there any responses received?
Oh, I actually received several responses from, uh, parents and staff this time. They're very positive. That they, that the newsletter was very informative and looked really useful. That's very unusual, but we keep them informed. Several, I think.
I think hopefully it's our special, uh, we both realize it's going to be quite good. Uh, Norwich Park District, uh, nothing to currently report, but in the coming weeks, uh, the committee needs to schedule another meeting. Uh, discussion items, Mrs. Cruz.
Thank you. So to begin with, uh, we received a check, a very generous donation, uh, from a previous superintendent, Dr. Susan Knight, uh, last week for ten thousand dollars, uh, written out to Norwich Schools Foundation. I have not spoken with the foundation yet about the check, um, but I'll see them on Friday at Bingo, so I figured I'd talk to them in person after I officially told board that we received that check. I think I mentioned it to you in December. Uh, so really excited. Such a very generous and, and wonderful gift to receive from a previous superintendent here in the district. We'll continue to work, uh, with the foundation on additional materials or experiences for the students. Uh, we don't have that earmark for anything at this point, so we'll work on that. Organic life began today, um, and, uh, since I attached this preface today of a couple of little changes, uh, the equipment arrived. Uh, I want to thank my Buildings and Grounds Committee. They were, we were all here yesterday. Um, they had to run some new electrical, they had to get some equipment in, they had to move some things around, we set everything up, and they did a great job, um, here till late last night getting everything set. Organic life, also very committed to being here late last night to getting everything set. And we served lunch today. Today was, uh, chicken nuggets, which were like these long, the chicken nuggets. They were actually really good. I tried one. Um, then they were green beans and, uh, there was some fruit, which I actually thought were apples at first. I was talking to some of the students and they said, no, no, they're not apples. And I said, well, what are they? Because they were a little cutier and they were, and they said they're magical delicious fruits. So then I went and asked their honeydew, which is great, the honeydews. We did this kind of in the year. Uh, so we had planned for, um, eighty meals at Giles and we actually served eighty meals at Giles today. We typically serve thirty meals at Giles. And we, um, planned for a hundred meals at Lee and we served ninety-nine meals at Lee today. So it was very good planning, yeah. It helped our survey that we put out helped, um, from our parents. We still picked it up, you know, a few because we knew there would be some more interest. Um, the kids had their little trays and walked through and they scooped on the food and seemed like it was a great time. My kids loved it. They, they usually take their own and they wanted to try the new ones. Yeah, the chicken nuggets were good. They were good. Oh, and a roll, like a whole wheat roll was on there also. Um, at Lee typically, it changes. Typically, Lee is about fifty, sixty, so an increase in the amount of students that order at Lee is a lot. So we'll see how day go, day two goes, but, uh, it's been great so far. Anything's my luck. Um, Derek and I met with, uh, Mr. Tannhauser and Mr. Larson last week also to discuss, um, some areas that the village might be able to support us with. Some of them were parking areas around Lee and Giles. They want to take a look at, at Lee and maybe opening up and putting some signage. If you think about the space across the street from Lee right now, that is, Mark, there's no parking during the day, but maybe changing those spots to visitor parking during the day so that we try to discourage, uh, cars from pulling up on the asphalt in front of the school, which it's, it's not that that's hurting anything, but it, it isn't great for safety when cars pull up in front of the school. Uh, we also talked about putting up, um, working on the asphalt, which is, you might recall that we did put in the school maintenance grants for some asphalt work. So we get some support from the village also on that. We can probably do more like our parking lot, some of our courtyard areas with asphalt as well, and that's at Giles and Lee. Parking issue at Giles, we talked about putting in some handicap spot by door two on Cullen and some visitor spots over there as well, some dedicated visitor spots. Nothing was finalized yet, but it's all written down. We'll, we'll continue, uh, having conversations. We talked about the courtyard here at Lee. That's not an area that really the village is going to support us on, but we still felt it was a good idea to have that conversation with them. Um, as you recall, that parking lot, that courtyard area. We don't flood like we used to before we put in those deeper sewers and we did the epoxy along the side. Um, however, we still have a really difficult line growing grass. Uh, we talked about the lighting around Lee and Giles. Over here at Lee, they talked about adding, uh, which we didn't think about before, was there are two posts out there that are on the school side that light up the street. So they can put an array out there, um, that would actually light up part of the parking lot. Now, we don't know exactly how much that would be, but it would be a great first step for the village to do that on a couple of the spots out there. And then we can look at if additional lighting is needed, more in the side by the field. We'd look at additional lighting there. At Giles, it was a little harder, um, because the front of Giles is lit well as far as our, our land goes. Um, the heart of art comes into those parking spaces and the lights are on the other side of the street at Giles. So in order to put up additional lighting around those parking spaces, we would need poles. So we're not sure exactly what can happen there, but it is something that they want to look into as well. And then we, um, exchanged a few emails back and forth, a couple of vacations went on, um, in the meantime, and we are going to schedule a follow-up meeting, uh, with the builders. Very productive meeting. I think we had a good time, spent a couple hours with them, walking through each of the different buildings and, uh, it was really great and it's great to, uh, partner with the village.
There's still cars at Giles that don't even.
There are still cars at Giles, definitely. We just, we spoke to them about that as well. Especially with, um, the snow that we just had. We did, um, we plowed on Sunday this week, which of course, that's okay for people to be parked there on Sunday, but we wanted, especially on here, we wanted to make sure that we were ready for the week and we're going to get something. Yep. Uh, give me an update on our architect search. We are out, um, for an R.F.Q. for architect. Yesterday, Derek and I walked fourteen people from twelve different firms through. It was great. It was a great day. Made really good time. Uh, we walked both buildings. Um, the proposals, the next steps are due March fourth. Then the interview committee has a, a set timeframe to do some interviews and then we move on to negotiating fees and then bring a proposal to the board on May twenty-second. Uh, really interesting is one of the firms that was there was the previous architect before we worked with S.D.R. So it was actually really interesting. One of the things we talked about quite a bit was that wood ceiling at Giles. And he stated that wood ceiling at Giles is structural, which we figured out when we flipped our head up there. That's actually holding up the ceiling and holding up the roof at Giles. And that when they did the soundproofing, so he was involved with the soundproofing, he was involved with the band room here when they built the band room. He was also involved when they built room one hundred at Giles, that, which is, which is now the office of Giles, the main office. Uh, he stated that, um, when they did the soundproofing, they didn't see a way to take that wood ceiling down because there aren't, that's, there aren't joists in there and that is really struggle. Um, so we're going to continue looking at our options with that. Um, we did receive our first approval for some electrical work from our infrastructure grant. Um, so once we get an architect outboard, we'll see what our options are again for that ceiling. Uh, we do some money satisfied for that. Um so once we get an architect outboard, we'll see what our options are again for that ceiling, uh we do some money satisfied for that, but it it you know, talking with him and it wasn't official or anything, but it it does sound like that. Um he's, he was, he was really interesting to talk to, and around, there are different areas around where they're not even see permits and his name is on there, so it's kind of funny that he was there. Uh so different, fourteen different, I'm sorry, twelve different firms over there. Yesterday. So we're really hopeful and and excited. So tonight I'm uh asking the board to approve the summer school ESY plan, um that there is action and consent for this. Uh this would start June ninth through the twenty-seventh, there's no school on June nineteenth. The cost, as we discussed last month, would be one fifty per child, that does need to be paid either by check or cash at Lee to be registered. And then a limited number of students um will receive tuition vouchers, that would be students that would be covered by a grant. So we have uh money in two of our ML grants, one for students who are new to the country, and the other one for students who are not new to the country. And we also have funds in our title grant for students who are receiving tiered uh supports in management. So those students will be working, the ML team's already working on those with Mr. Kletos, and then the other uh teachers will be identifying with the principals what students would get the other options. And then uh ESY, which is Extended School Year for students who qualify with Special Education Services, that is free, um set by the state, it must be free. Um so ESY, we run those same dates uh for students who qualify for Extended School Year. And they have to have that qualification on, right? Also up for action tonight is the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, uh just highlight some dates, August twenty-first and twenty-second are the Teacher Institute dates, which is a little different this year, those are Thursday, Friday. The first day of student attendance for first through eighth grade is the twenty-fifth, which is that next Monday. Kindergarten starts a little different, preschool starts a little different. Uh preschool calendar was something I'll bring to you next month, that isn't finalized yet. Preschool has a whole separate calendar, PFA has different dates that are required, such as uh they do um family visits, they go to homes, all those dates have to be built into the calendar. Winter break, spring break are in line with Ridgewood, and um last day of attendance would be June fifth, which is kind of funny, it's been the last day in the last two years as well. And as we discussed last month, there was um the option of March seventeenth, we are proposing to have that as a Teacher Institute Day. Instead, we kind of, I talked about a New Learning Day possibly, so when we went back to the um committee and we talked about all our options, we felt that it would be best, and it March seventeenth is a good time of the year, so we removed the January Teacher Institute Day. So the kids will come back to school on Monday after the two weeks off. And then we have an institute day on this March seventeenth, and we'll just have that at Giles that day, since Foley will take place here at Giles. I think it's good, good for. Also taking action today, and the registration residency, so we're looking at open up the Power School Portal on March first, closing in on May first. Curriculum fees must be paid at the time of registration, and as we talked last month, we would put out a fifty-dollar late fee if they, if the fees are not paid by May first. What's really exciting, and we've run through it, but little things were changing, but we'll be ready by May first, is it's now one form to be filled out, so you don't have to go into like Form A and Form B and Form C and what often happened is people would skip over a bunch of forms, so now it's one form, and there are mandatory fields, like for example, you have to upload a mortgage, you need to upload your um uh rental agreement before you can move forward. Because what we also found was many times, like we would have in there, please go upload your residency stuff now, and people didn't do it. And it was, you know, chasing down people's residency, now you cannot complete registration if you don't upload your residency forms. So um uh Mr. Joe has been working with um Ms. DiCinchio on that, and we're almost at the point where we're ready, but we'll we'll be there by March first, we have a final run-through on Thursday. It's difficult because when when we look at it from our side, it's different than what a parent sees, so we have to, we have to make up a case. And we had fret the student, and then went through it and what a parent was. So a couple little things worth waking, but we are, again, asking the board to take action on that tonight, along with curriculum fees. Uh we are increasing preschool and kindergarten tuition slightly to three thousand dollars from twenty-eight uh hundred dollars. Curriculum fees for preschool to one eighty, and then kindergarten fee through eighth grade to two seventy-five. We, of course, will receive uh fee waivers with, based on financial need, beginning on March fifteenth for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And I'm asking the board to take action on that tonight as well. Some questions about all that new school stuff, new year stuff, it's hard to believe we're talking about, and Mr. Masters was talking about the eighth grade meetings earlier. Oh my goodness, no, my quick one. Um I am asking the board also in consent tonight to take action on our anticipated open positions, we usually do that at this month because this is when the job fair is open. Mrs. DiCinchio and I, I'm sorry, Mrs. DeVore and I will be attending a job fair with West Forty on Saturday. Um so we are looking at uh several special education positions. Um over at Giles, we're looking at posting for that interventionist as anticipated, also looking at science position. At Lee, we're looking at preschool, um we probably will post as anticipated a general education primary position at Lee, and then also that second interventionist. We're exploring into the bilingual Polish, Ukrainian, and Spanish area, not sure if we will be, uh will we forward on that, but we'll put those down as anticipated. And then on the support side, we will be looking at some covering some FMLA leaves, that'll happen at the beginning of next year. Uh we are looking for a new school nurse at Lee, um which you noticed from the agenda tonight, the school nurse at Lee has resigned um right now, which will have that covered, but we also need to make sure we have a a school nurse for next school year. And then, of course, we're always looking for paraprofessionals in special education and preschool. Our preschool for all grant last, next year, which we will be applying for uh additional eighteen seats, once that opens up, it's not open yet, as you recall, we have a hundred and two seats. There's really no reason for us not to get more funds and get a hundred and twenty seats. So we'll be applying for that once that um is open. And um then we are looking at additional paraprofessional support in preschool next year. So currently what we have is one paraprofessional and having one of our preschool classrooms. Uh having two paraprofessionals in the preschool classrooms will help with the, especially with the vast amount of needs that we're seeing in preschool. There were this year twenty-seven students coming up of our early intervention list, which means that they're receiving some type of special education support from the state. Once they turn three, then they move into our program, and we have to evaluate them. So we are definitely seeing it, and this not only us, this just seems to be in our three-to-five girl population. We also are looking at some change in our preschool program next year, where we're going to be offering at least one, maybe two, dividing on our numbers, sections of just four-year-old to help some of the pre-learning skills or pre-kindergarten skills. We're looking at having some support with professional development and our, through our um title grants and our movement from preschool to kindergarten to help have an outside look of that movement. Uh Dr. Raviolo is just having his teachers uh do some vertical articulation work, and I think um they did also at Giles. But I just sat in on one of their meetings at Lee, and it was a kindergarten staff, they had gone to observe the preschool. And they were like, wow, um reading our expectations of where we want them to be when they come into kindergarten is so different than what the preschool environment is. And that's not new, um but I think it's gotten a little bit further with the PFA grant, because PFA is very specific, it's very much a play-based grant, which is wonderful. Um but they have specific times and things of things we have to do in within that grant, like they have a hundred, well, it's like an hour, ten minutes, though frequently. You know, which is great, believe me, I'm an early childhood person, there's more. The structure is imperative, so we want to look at changing some of our four-year-old classrooms to offer a little bit more of our structure lead. Um and then we'll be looking at West Forty's support on that, right now, West Forty is actually working with Mr. Kletos with our ML teams and with our preschool team. So now we're looking at just kind of expanding that into our PFA team next year, to help that transition a little bit better. Hopefully help those ready for this work, that you're addressing. Um so one of the things that I learned, and I will be honest with you, it was just recent, that Illinois school code does say that school boards should review every six months their closed session recordings. So um we have been working on reviewing them in our, in the district, and at this point, we are recommending that the following closed session, um not the minutes, but the recordings are destroyed. This is something we should be doing every six months, moving forward, we will. Um this is something that all of our surrounding districts do, when I was at a meeting with our our superintendents in the surrounding area, they were like, yep, you need to review those, you need to bring that to the board, and you know, make a recommendation on what we should do with them, at this point, my recommendation is is to destroy them. The actual paper minutes have to be cut forever. Along with the packet, so when when we do a board meeting, Andrea will print out the board packet. And I'm like, you received that board packet, and that will go into into the board folder, and we keep that then forever. Many, many board packets are on here. Any questions, I'll know, that is on action tonight.
We're seeing gaps in dates here.
I wish I could tell you that.
Okay.
I I can't, I'm sorry.
What was your question?
Gaps in dates, why are there gaps in dates? I'm sorry.
When when you say you have to review, what does that entail? You listen to them all?
Uh I I can't tell you, we listened to every one of them, no. No, we look back at some closed session minutes to see if there was, uh on the actual paper minutes, if there was something that we felt was valuable, that was useful. We didn't feel that that was the case for that. Any other questions? Looking at policy then, policy updates, we're on the four hundreds, today you have the five hundreds, so please put those into your policy binder. Um and we'll start to look at those, they're a little needy, so we'll probably um make break them up, but it is a good month um because we're not going to receive the next policy updates from press until April. So this is kind of a good time to take a look at at these large amounts of policy. Um what I am asking you to take action on today is four eleven, which was just a cleanup, cleanup of the spaces. Uh four colon one nine zero was to add law enforcement on the end of the first paragraph where it lists all the different agencies that we've worked with, local, on. And then in the four hundreds was four colon one seven five, which we talked a little bit more about, and I'm going to go on to, into the next page. And then the five hundreds obviously are at your table tonight. Here's policy colon, uh four colon one seven five, this policy discusses um visitors and uh staff and student teachers, things like that. So what I'm recommending to make the change of is that the superintendent designated shall perform fingerprint-based criminal history record and records information checks on our screening required by state law, supportive policy for employees. Period, end there. We do that through the Norwich Police Department, they bill us for that. Student teachers must provide a copy of fingerprint-based criminal history reports, so we we get that from, typically a school's going to do that, and a student teacher. If not, that's your first lesson in going out and finding West Forty and getting their fingerprints done. We don't, the difference here is we don't pay for them. Moving forward then, uh students doing field or clinical experiences other than school student teaching, contractors, employees who have direct daily contact with one or more children and resource personnel or volunteers must provide a a valid ID daily. These visitors will be screened against the sex offenders registry and custom databases, which we can add in, that's why I added that there. Including those with custody orders or banned visitor status, which is the Raptor system that we are currently using. The board president shall ensure that these checks are completed um for the superintendent. And then I'm suggesting here that the superintendent take appropriate action based on the results of any criminal background check or and or screening. Um if somebody comes up with something, it really wouldn't be ideal to have the board president do that, that doesn't make sense. You know, if that, if somebody comes into our front door, I can't call the board president and say, hey, I got somebody at the front door that came up with something collacked, or when we run a criminal background check on someone we want to hire, um then that would be, again, my goal, to have that conversation with that person. And and now we ask with you, it's it's happening. And and play in situations, we don't hire people if they have a criminal background check, um report come up, um but it it's come up. This is, um as we talked about last month, this is following what our current practice is. So any parent, like on Friday, for example, uh PTA was sponsoring parties for Valentine's Day, we had seventy parents come into Lee. And they all had their IDs um either scanned, or they've already been in our systems, they've already been cleared, we ran visitors passes on every single person that came through. And then as as uh Mr. Becky mentioned last month, we don't, you know, just let people wander around the building, if anyone's in the building, they're always with somebody. Staff member. Um of course, a situation like seventy parents coming into the building, they're, they are walking down the halls by themselves. I did chat with them for a while before we let them go into the classrooms, because they want to go right away, they're really, they're really great, they're very excited about what you can't. Um and then the teachers in the room, so we do make sure that someone is always with visitors when they enter. Any questions? Okay, then in March, um I, as you notice, I did not ask you to approve the um schedules from the principals tonight, that's something, something we'll do in March. Uh and it gives you time for any questions you might have. We should be hearing about the single audit from our auditors in March. In March, um we should start to discuss the Saturday uh building rental contracts for next year. Um so that we have a couple of months to have those discussions and go back to them, see what their plans are, and then we can make a final decision in in, I would say, no later than May. And then um, so the ONCC, which is the O'Hare Noise Commission Council, is a uh board that I sit on. Um and every few years, we need to have a new intergovernmental agreement between the school district and the O'Hare Noise uh Commission Council. Uh the O'Hare Noise Commission Council is the council that is responsible for the soundproofing um in both of our buildings, so I still sit on that. Um it's not monthly, sometimes Mrs. DeVore goes as well, um or goes in place of us, we don't both go on. But if schedules uh allow, one of us will always go, it's about, starts off monthly, like in the fall, and then like our next meeting right now is not till March, we get meetings. And I, we'll be to sit on the board for that, so that is an active board position of voting and passing the budget and everything that you do, we just do. There are about, I'm going to say twenty school districts involved. And then, of course, Norwich, Norwich is there, in fact, my first meeting I went, I I thought I was answering for Norwich, and I'm not Norwich, I'm school district maybe. Um but one of the um trustees, so Dan was there last month, but usually I'll have trustees from Norwich. And Arlene is always there from Harvard, the mayor from Harvard, she's. So I will bring you that um agreement next month, or in April, but soon.
What are the different agreements on, I mean, what we agreed to?
Just agreeing to being involved in it, that's all. They have not, they've changed the threshold of what they are following now as far as noise, to make it a little more generous um for other people to get uh soundproofing. Um they haven't allocated any additional funds to schools at this point, but you know, we're going to keep going and hoping that someday they will. They might. The biggest thing that we worked on um with the ONCC, which we presented to the FTA, was a uh a quiet flight, you might have heard about it on the news, it was all over the news. Was a quiet flight proposal on, you know, how we can keep the area quieter. It's actually a fascinating meeting to go to in those ways, because they present to us like how many flights left on which runway, and um you know, how many flights were at what time in the day, and then they spend a lot of time talking about how many complaints there were in different areas um on uh sound, and um. And then we make, you know, last, like, so we pass a plan to send to the FDA, sorry, the FFA about quiet flights and how we can help mitigate some of the noise here in Norwich. Correct, correct. It's actually not funny because, you know, I'm out in Villa Park and with the construction going on at O'Hare, they just started using a runway that kind of goes right over my house now. And one of my neighbors said to me, oh my gosh, why are there planes here? And I was like, well, I can actually tell you. Why, why they're using that runway now because they have construction going on. If you go down Irving, you can see the construction going on on the right of the airport, which should be done soon. And just like everyone else, you know, they're having trouble with water and making retention ponds and, you know, getting, making sure that everything's safe for the runners. And that is my point.
Consent agenda, can I hit a motion? For fifteen A through fifteen K.
Motion.
Amanda, Lauren, any discussion? Can I have a roll call please?
Mrs. Vic Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Erbaf Arnfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. To board comments, anything the board wants to share, comment? We have a question yet or questions? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn to closed session. Uh, motion. Renzo and Fanny, a discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Vic Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Erbaf Arnfield?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. It is eight fifteen right now, we will start closed session at eight twenty-five. We are now back in open session at nine fifty-three. We'll move on to Personnel Action Items, eighteen A through eighteen C. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Amanda, Fanny? Um, any discussion? Can you roll call please?
Mrs. Vic Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Erbaf Arnfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp? Mrs. Lala? Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Board meeting reflection. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine fifty-four. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'll close same day, the meeting is now adjourned.